To one state to twenty first roll call please.
Here.
Thompson here.
Yeah.
Running.
Here.
And I see flat plan is not here.
Okay. Um, we will start with our department head reports. Um, chief. Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Uh, we took in. Total of three hundred and thirty calls over for the month of May, which is a lot of calls for our officers. Uh, average eleven per day. Yeah, eight missed any of us, one found in the list. Sixty nine traffic stops, which is a little lower because of the amount of calls officers are responding to uh taking calls. Fourteen citations issued, just traffic citations, not counting underage drinking and disorderly conduct and truancy and stuff like that. Uh, twenty new ca- uh, new cases investigated by our officers, seven uh cases referred to the district attorney's office. Uh, one was referred to the D N R for a uh U T V violation. One death investigation, eight school responses, uh, those should obviously go down now.
Although it's summer schools.
Yeah.
Oh.
We had a. One charge of possession marijuana and unfortunately one charge of possession of meth. One possession of drug paraphernalia regarding that was all the same person had the same stuff uh solved. Lots of mutual aid uh within our city uh with other departments as well as other agencies. What's new is we have two open spots for the police officer's position, which we are actively recruiting. Uh, I was able to do a active shooter presentation for Camp Wapak asset, which was a really, really fun time. Uh, today I met with Camp Ickle Allen director and they want me for next year because they have their training was done already. So I'm gonna do an active shooter presentation for them for next year. Uh, and also have um possibly an active shooter presentation with the library uh personnel as well and maybe the public depending on how how that goes. At a Juneteenth bike parade, that was a success. Uh, so that was a lot of fun. Uh, also policies are being disseminated now finally through Deer Creek Technology, so we are getting things moving. Everything's getting up to speed now. Also, I'm working on a whole new set of policies separate of these from the C G S uh audit that we had, um, so that. There's a whole new set of issues that we have to take care of, but it's fine. Everything's going smooth now. Uh, this audit is in, we're just waiting for a response back to see what we need to tighten up. Also, we plan on uh get doing the traffic control for the Fourth of July to make sure there's no issues or when the fireworks are done. So it's a smooth sailing right through so everybody can get to their homes in a a good amount of time without having any traffic uh bottlenecked up anywhere. Also, we have. Our uh. Radio is finally being shipped for our new squad, so we're gonna be able, that's supposed to be shipped on June thirtieth. So hopefully that'll get here within a week or two, and then we can ship our squad out and finally get uh into service. Uh, and. I think that is about it for now. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, library director Heather. Make your way up.
Hello, everybody. Uh, so it's full on summer reading time at the library. We've been busy. It's been lots of kids in the building. Since we last met, we've had four more school visits, seven adult programming events, five storytimes and six youth summer reading programs with an attendance of four hundred and ninety-three people. So it's bringing in a lot of traffic. That's great. Some bad news, our youth services librarian has resigned. She is moving on to opening some Scooters coffee franchises across the border in Minnesota. She's from Omaha, so that's where that organization is from. Uh, we wish her well, and I've got some interviews scheduled for next week, so hopefully over the next month or two, we'll have another youth services librarian. Um, I've been doing the summer reading stuff, so if anybody wants to come and back me up in storytime, I would appreciate it. Uh, it's been a lot of fun and um I handed everybody a copy of our new employee handbook. We've been working with an employment attorney for several months, and this is our copy of it. It is materially the same as the city of Amory one, but we omitted a few things like the cell phone policy because none of our staff need cell phones or use them for work exclusively. Um, another change is the language. Instead of saying city administrator, it says library director. So it's just been condensed a little bit, consolidated, um, language changes. We also took a few things that were in the city handbook and turned them into policies so that our board can change them a little bit more often as needed without reprinting a whole handbook. So if there's any questions about that, let me know, but it's it's all the same expectations and guidelines as the city of Amory. Um, I handed everybody a community care kit slip. This is something that we're doing in adult services since we've got our altogether now theme. We are asking for donations for these items, and then we're taking over this room in July and people can build care kits, little baggies with all the essentials that someone needs if they're in need of shelter, unhoused, or in an emergency situation. So Northwoods is going to take care of handing those out. Um, and then the last thing I'm still working on our long range plan, we had focus groups all day long. What, three weeks ago? And we had about fifty attendees, five different groups, lots of great information. So we're condensing the feedback into themes, identifying potential goals and working forward from there. So hopefully next month I'll have some sort of draft long range plan to show our library board, and then maybe the month after that I can show all of you. So onward and upward. Any questions, Mary?
No, just an observation. Brooke did a great job.
Yes, absolutely. She'll be missed. All right, thanks.
Thank you. So do we have public works?
We have.
Or not? No, okay. Um, then it's Taylor, deputy clerk treasure. Everybody's away. Make things up.
We'll use your expertise in uh number eight for sure.
Yeah.
All right, this past month has been busy with liquor licenses. We've had a few licenses that are still trickling in. Otherwise, all the licenses are ready. I've been calling the businesses to let them know that their licenses are ready and if they still always have been letting them know the amount and to come on in and pick them up. We've also been working on compiling information for the water and sewer rate study that's under the works. It's been sent off to the people that need it, so it's kind of on them now to let me know if they need anything else. Yesterday and today Peggy, I and some of the public works guys had training for new meter software. Specifically like it's the in-between software, so we have billing software. We have a device that uses the meters, but we have a software that had to talk in between. That has been replaced. The last one was basically obsolete and was only on one computer and could not be moved to any other computer. So we lost the computer, it was gone. So we are now on with a beacon online software to kick our stuff over from our billing software into the reading device and then back again. So it should be pretty smooth and it looks like maybe it'll give us some more options for things that we're going to need moving forward. Last week, public books also helped me out on Tuesday with my disconnect list. We did disconnects last Tuesday, so now we have everybody pretty much either up to date on the bill or on a payment plan, which gets us ready for next Friday's meter reading. Bills will go out sometime in the middle of July and then they'll be due for the middle of August again, so we're on track for that. Last week, City Hall had the honor of hosting two summer school classes that are learning about Amory. I was able to go through with them. We hosted them in this room. I was able to go through with them some of the things we do at City Hall as well as some of the history of Amory. So the first class was more questioning than the second class. Second class was a little quieter. I think they were a little older. Recycling meeting met two weeks ago. They're working on some ideas to increase recycling in the city of Amory and some different unique ideas that they're kind of brainstorming at this time. They've also been working on an education plan, um, just a basic one to get things started and to get residents more educated about the recycling process. They're also hoping that coming this fall, we can apply for a grant to get more recycling bins to put out within the city of Amory. Airport commission met last week and Melissa from S E H was here for airport commission to go over. We are going to be doing an airport planning process um, like a master plan for the airport of things that they want to see in the future. So we met with airport commission and then a couple of members that have um people that have hangers out there that want to be part of the planning in the future. So this was just like the initial meeting of that and then we'll move on with that whole process so that we can actually do things out there. And then I have also attended several arts parks and rec rooms in the last few weeks, and they are actually here tonight. They are the third item on the agenda to tell you their recommendations for what they've seen throughout the parks in town. All right, any other questions? All right.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to uh. Our wastewater treatment plant zoning code proposal from S E H. Please. Help us out. And this is, and this is a proposal to do the labor for. Putting these together.
Correct, so um this quick introduction, I've I've been in front of uh this committee and the council before, but uh Sharon, I don't know if we've met before, but my name's Eric Henning Sky with S E H. Um, we're, we're S E H is currently designing a new wastewater treatment plant. Work with Jeremy and staff to to get that online. And as as part of that, um, we did an original study which called facility plan. And that laid out uh really what the city needed to do to go in the future, be in compliance with the D N R um, plan for future growth, that kind of thing. And one thing that it noted in there was that um there's a D N R code that uh requires certain setbacks from waste art treatment plants to restrict development. And we talked about this at a staff rather than and yeah, I don't know if you're in that meeting or not, but had it in Benway, but this was eventually coming, this being uh you have to update your zoning code ordinance to be in compliance with what the D N R requires. And so this is something that we need in place eventually as we go through the process of um the new wastewater treatment plant. Um, we move it in place by our submitted of the plans and specs, which is um to the D N R, which is coming in October. But just a a quick. Timeline update, we're in design now, we're going to the D N R um in the fall and excuse me a little bit over the winter and start construction on this uh next year. So it's all progressing as it as it should and we'll keep working through that, but this is kind of one of those steps. So we did not include this um this zoning code update in our design. These, um, and so this was a a separate thing that we needed to come and uh task you for. So um, we look grace who was the one who signed up the the letter um would be the one um, heading up the efforts for that and it's one of our our planners. We need community development specialists, um, but I am local and it was easy for me to come.
Yeah, and the schedule looks like it's um very manageable to get it done before October as long as we don't slip up on any of our part.
Right, and we we uh Ben and I talked about even pushing it out a month and decided since we can get it on this agenda, it's just. I'm moving with it.
Yeah, those things have uh you can say October and when you think we'll next week or so is July and suddenly it's September and now no, let's do it. Let's get it done.
So just a clarifying question, because I know we've talked about this several times. This only impacts development moving forward, right? Because I think we talked about how we had to do some sort of special exception or something with the D N R for things that are already there.
Right.
Correct?
It is correct. Yep, so we're moving forward and um included that exhibit of where we expect the restrictions to be applied. And we're doing it from the um from the structures and not from the property boundaries. It was a little bit tighter circle. Um, so you're right, it's not, it won't affect anything that's there today. Um, you could, you can redo the existing uses and the existing spots now like a floodplain where you can't rebuild.
Mm-hmm.
The uses there are allowed. This this restricts. Anything further, I guess.
Makes sense.
I'd make a motion to uh forward the proposal onto the full council.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? On the favor, say I.
I.
Post. Harry. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a handout, I think somewhere in the Arts and Parks Committee. With a bunch of recommendations.
It looks like there's several here, so.
Yep.
Let them speak, I guess.
Good evening. Tommy Dusick, I'm the chair of the Arts Park and Recreation Committee. My co-chair is Catherine Wilson, along with Clean Adams, Denise Johnson, Joy Schaefer. We are on representation of the committee. On behalf of the Arts and Parks Committee, we have came up with a list of recommendations after touring all the parks and noticed a lot of things that need repair or could use improvement. At this time, I'm going to ask Joy Schaefer to please come up and read those.
You may or may not have the most. This, the only thing that may be different is this, there were some numbering things that were off, so.
So I am Joy Schaefer and I am a member of the Arts Parks and Recreation Committee. So on behalf of our committee, these are recommendations that are being made after um, we have spent some time in the last few weeks touring all of our parks. So we'll start with North Park. North Park playground equipment. There are broken slides, there are missing bolts on the slides and on the climbing tower. Um, the actual plastic um of the slides and on that climbing tower, there are pieces of that that are broken. Um, obviously creating some major safety concerns for having kids playing on that equipment. So our recommendations are that actually a lot of that equipment needs to be replaced in the interim. Obviously, we've talked about maybe we need to tape off these areas so that they aren't used by children. I I'm not sure what liabilities there might be for the city if kids are playing on those things and we've recognized there's issues. So this we thought was a priority item. Uh, the pavilion. Uh, this is the small pavilion and there is the open exposed um electrical fuse box there which concerns us a lot, um, because anybody could just open the fuse box and do whatever. So our thought was, again, this is a priority item that we need to cover and lock the fuse box. Um, the basketball court, there are cracks in the pavement, recommendation that those cracks need to be filled. We then, the next park we toured was Bobber Park. Um, we noted that there are missing and loose pavers and blocks around the bobber. Recommendation would be to replace and uh repair those pavers around the bobber. Um, there are also just general cosmetic needs as we walked out onto some of the various different uh landings. Um, painting of the landings and repairing some of the boards on the landings needs to also occur in the future. We went into Michael Park. The concern there was that there is some exposed water on the side of the dam, actually on both sides that certainly concerned us. Um, we too felt this was a priority item that there needs to be some fencing put up to prevent anyone from falling in there by the dam. Uh, suiting pit, obviously there's construction going on in New York and recommendation just maybe some general cosmetic upgrades in the future. North Twin Park, um, that dock has been welded together and the city crew feel that the repair will not hold. So the recommendation would be to replace the dock for next season. I mean, it is in, but next season it would probably need to be replaced. Um, also, um, there is missing any kind of a form of a trash receptacle, so recommendation is certainly to put a trash can in the park. Um, South.
Question is, is that the the east property that's on forty-six or the what, not the landing, that's the forty-sixth one, right?
This is the the landing down the street.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, South Twin Park. This park was probably the most concerning to us. Um, and I had the comment we made here is considering that we refer to ourselves as a city of lakes and this is the only beach option that we have, um, it was very sad. Um, there are safety concerns over the fact that the raft and the lifeguard stand are just sitting there posing uh potential safety concerns, vandalism opportunities. So recommendations are to remove that floating raft and lifeguard stand as soon as possible. Safety concerns were raised with the current signage. Um, and I, the recommendation would be new signage would, an example would be South Twin Park rules, park hours, certainly I understand, we understand those need to be there, five AM to nine PM. Um, swimming at young risk, no lifeguard on duty. All of the other list of rules, of which there are quite a few, um. The feeling was they're not being enforced, they're not applicable, so we should just remove them. So that would be something for future recommendation. Um, the pavilion has rotten posts that are holding the pavilion up, raising safety concerns over the structural integrity. Recommendation is to replace the the rotten posts. Um, the pickleball court, although that's not actually that part there, it's it is in that same area. And our committee has um had people uh present to us regarding the pickleball court. Um, there are numerous, uh, it says there are numerous pickleball players have expressed concerns over the safety of the current court. Um, it was noted, we went over there, we walked the court, that there are certainly several cracks in court areas. Recommendation is to future evaluation of the pickleball court um to be included in our strategic planning. Um, currently, um, we also mentioned that perhaps the current, that pickleball players could join forces and start some sort of a fundraising campaign in the interim. We did recommend that both that should probably be filled. Uh, playground equipment that's there. Uh, again, recommendation is fu- future evaluation and exploration of the need to replace or upgrade the playground equipment. Um, it's in pretty bad shape. Um, overall concerns about safety and vandalism. We had, um, you know, Jeff was with us on a lot of these and he mentioned there's, you know, been a lot of different vandalism there. Um, recommendation, upgrade security, whether I know there's been issues, there's been trail cams before and those have been vandalized. Um, but something to make that area more secure. Then we talked about the fact of what could that area, what could be done there? And there was discussion about the need to explore the addition of perhaps a splash pad. Perhaps that would be an area for that. If so, the bathrooms would need to be reopened and remodeled. Um, the last item, Schumacher Park. Um, we actually were requested, um, the garden club, some members request. They were asking to help cover the cost of match and the annual flowers that get put in there. So the recommendation we had there is to increase the flower budget for the city to include Schumacher Park to help defray costs of annuals and match by the garden club. Which is unfortunately losing a lot of, lot of members. That was it. I can try to answer if you have questions. We've got committee members here.
Well, thank you for, I think, walking through the parts and minimizing where we are and uh, what what needs to be addressed and and how we can best tackle that. That's why I wanted this committee. I think it's important uh that we do have people watching our parks and making recommendations to the council on how we can increase recreation in in the city, so. Thank you.
Because obviously the parks are a draw for people to use. We want them to use them. We want them to feel safe.
Vandalism is occurring?
Jeff Mahoney pointed about, he walked all this, and he told us of several appliances. That's how we.
Okay, you know.
But you can say it was, it was previously the bathrooms down at the park, they break the toilets, break the sinks off and different things like that. So they've been locked. I think this is the second summer they've been locked to avoid that and a porta potty was put down there for the pickleball players.
And also the swit- lifeguard tower is also kids jump off it.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Byes late at night.
Yeah, previous problems.
In North Park, too, the playground equipment, as we toured it, somebody took a Sharpie and has nicely decorated the tall slide. I'm down there seven days a week. I live two blocks away from there. That park isn't very.
Daylight when that happened?
When we noticed it, but that park isn't very disrepair. And that playground equipment, I remember when that was put in, I was very young.
You're still very young.
Man, you're over there in the end. That was, I'm sure you didn't all wear that one. I know Dwayne quite frequently in the deacons. The bathrooms and stuff, it seems like it's not quite as bad. Now, since they got some campers and there's a few more people kind of there, but it was quite regular where the toilets.
I can definitely get some, put it out for patrol so the guys can go to park a little more often.
Yes, a lot of it is too, his recommendation is cameras. I mean, what what do they, can they do when officers on a traffic stop or on a call for service? Cameras, I work at the school, I'm custodian at the high school. Cameras are our friends. People in the act of not very smart acts. So.
Yeah, question for you.
It's a river. Sort of like when you go across the dam, if we're into the other side, what would it be to the east side? There's that concrete. Concrete. Want to say a form that holds the bank back. Our suggestion was to put a, what would be a twelve foot length of fence, you think, Jeremy? Somewhere near.
Did that not have, did that not have, we used to have fence on it, didn't it?
That part never has and it's been I know it's been discussed a few times. We do it right, you'll see every kid sitting on it. On and off, but it's like, put that twelve feet on out of the disco off the grass.
With with that though, at least then there's a little bit of a buffer to try to help.
Hmm.
And you can't.
It's moving pretty good.
Uh, primarily on the east side. Primarily on the east side.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Another area that is almost even more concerning when we went down there is when you're even gonna start to go to walk across the walkway to go across. There is an area about like this that has no fence. And it's like right down to the water and that was real surprised to see that. It's not.
It'd be the west side. Right where the metal grating starts. And these are all recommendations, but twice a once a week, all summer long, we have music on the river down there, especially three Fridays of summer. We have a lot of activity down there.
Yeah, and the kids all run all over the place.
Been pretty lucky. Our luck could run out.
Right.
I didn't want to go that way, but it's a realistic topic. I mean. Like you were fire chief for how many years? How many close calls have we, did we go through?
Yeah, cool. Couple of things occurred to me. One is the pavilion on the south park. That that was donated to the city by the Lions Club as was the both of the north park uh pavilions. I wonder if uh maybe they could be approached to see if they're, they have any interest in another project. I I don't know.
So we did, when we started this, we did approach Lions about repair of the playground equipment itself, and they said to make a list and we could submit it to them and they would go through everything that they have had had handed to them.
Okay. And then um when you talk, the last recommendation, I I agree with you, Tom. I it, we need to have a camera on, that's why everything these days, I mean, use. There's no protecting us from morons unless you can catch them right in the act.
Backward.
Um. So I I, but we have cameras.
Yep.
Along with other cameras that work and at least on North Park, we have internet service up there. And maybe do we have it down the south side now? Think that one.
Working on it. What if at the beach, I believe, I don't know, be going in that like survey park when the bathroom goes in as part of that, there's nothing.
But if, but if it's an issue with the pickleball carts. You know, then maybe we should consider. You know, then maybe we should consider putting enough stuff in there so we could run a camera on the pickleball courts. Cause it, that, that's all twin beach house and, and uh. Stop that, that's been an issue for years, not just recently, that's been a long time.
Keep going, Rick.
You talked about splash pad, has anybody had a discussion, Joyce, with uh Joanne Jackson? Well, because Joanne, well, I don't know which organization asked her about it, but I know that she's been actively involved in. Types of fundraising, et cetera, et cetera, for, for a lot of, either, either the pool or the water park. Recently, but I know after she retired, she agreed to at least. You know, I understand to be the chairman, but at least uh look into that, so she might be a resource for that.
And that was when the uh discussions about a pool were heating up, when the school referendum stuff was happening. Uh, it's, I think that if that's something that is on the strategic plan for the city, that we definitely, I mean, just like. A new pickleball court requires fundraising, a new splash pad will require fundraising, so I think whenever we get to that point and. We have it on our strategic plan, that that's what we wanna do, then, then we get the appropriate people in place to.
The pickleball court, no, it's not just fixing the blacktop, you know, we did that, I don't know, ten years ago, maybe. But uh, um, that needs to have a foot or two feet of soil removed.
Right.
Put in with the gravel or the, you know, concrete base, recycle concrete base and then. Over the top of it, and no one in the city should complain a lick about it, not using it, cause it's busy from morning to night. Basically, seven days a week.
That was one thing that we had brought up was, and that was brought to our attention, that overall in the end. There is a lot of work that does need to be done to it, for at the meantime, it is playable, so we have time to assess.
Yeah, well.
Our options.
Right, we're probably too late to do anything to it this year, but plan for next year anyway.
With the splash pad, one of the biggest things is that would. In my opinion, that'd be a lot cheaper option than pursue a swimming pool, cause it's a lot less maintenance, I know our city crew has a lot of things to do. And in the end, in the winter, you just turn the water off, blow them out, put antifreeze in them.
And like I said, I would encourage you to talk to Joanne, cause I know she. Has at least. Proves that, yeah.
For, for many of these things, this is really something that, um. To Jeff and have it work through this list, because now that we have a, a list. That you can work with, there's a lot of these things that the crew can pick off, especially with the priority items with the. Power box and, and things like that, um, when it comes to the, the, the slides and things like that, I, I think that might be. Not, you know, maybe replacing some slide bolts and things, they could do that. But what I'm wondering about is doing to take any action to just get rid of those. You know, it's itself's twin. Just to get rid of the, those things.
That's the only way I'd vote to spend five cents on the salt.
Stuff is, is all I can think of, we need to do something.
The raft and.
Because I wanted to use a fancy word.
And it's the one thing is, when we had on there, there was a young kid that was going swimming. And he even said, yeah, we go here every year, and we asked him about the swimmer's edge, we get that every year, we just deal with it.
Hmm, there's a lot of people that choose to swim.
Just gotta take a shower right away and make sure you're here.
Yeah, get rid of those things.
Sitting on the bank, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The lifeguard tower, that's two stories, I believe, right, technically? I mean, kids climb up there, hey, look at me, fall, break a leg.
Yeah, 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 it should go.
As far as like the north park playground equipment, I mean, cause personally, I feel like the whole thing should probably be replaced. Um, is that something that your committee could look into? What are options to replace it are, and to come back with recommendations for replacement?
You know, yes, it's the bolts, but Jeff said the bolts can't be replaced.
Right.
And, and the stuff is cracked, so Jeff did just quit looking for us, we were curious about what. Slide, uh, five thousand nine, first slide, so. And I know that Lions was asked, I think there could be some monies they have, I.
Well, until there's a plan, until there's a comprehensive idea of what it is, um. Things won't happen.
Or right.
But that's why we brought it up as far as. If we know there are problems and there are holes, this, and there are potentially areas where children could get hurt. And that's, that's a common knowledge, and if somebody does get hurt.
And that's the question is. We came up with this list, yes, it's five thousand dollars to replace the slide. But that whole playground equipment would be two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to buy that. Plus installation, tearing out the old set, selling the new set, probably a week's labor, if I'm not wrong. You gotta pull your post, put new concrete in, so twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars doesn't look that bad after all, but it's the funding. For the outline, the safety versus the cost.
So I guess with these recommendations, it's like you had said, we had to send it to Jeff and.
Find out what, what they can do, and I don't know if we need to take any action to tell Jeff that his crew should take. Stuff out of the south twin park, because.
They need a motion to send it to. Yeah, just to fix it, fix up what they can.
Well, I think I would need to, uh, be certain that that exposure at the dam gets taken care of. Said it couldn't happen this year, but it's even a temporary fix. Or an area looking right straight down, let's see if we can get some graded steel or something over that. Temporary revenue place or something until we can get a fence up there, we'll get it protected.
And we were talking about things and thinking those.
Yeah, he knows. But, but what, what we can, was he's not here, and so his job is. Come back with a recommendation, this is what they can fix, and what we need to apply to.
What you're saying is there's more than just a committee nagging at him, now he has his bosses.
Well, we, we kinda take what Jeff says as, you know, the gospel, so, you know, hopefully he is. Knows more about it than we do by far, but, but no, I think that the best thing for us to do is. Work with public works and understand what's in their scope. Um, what needs, um, you know, some outside help and, and how will we fund it, and if there's, you know, beyond that. We'll have to approach, you know, other entities or look for fundraising opportunities for changing out the playground equipment. But we appreciate the detail that you provided. Because, um. Too many times you get, well, this park's a mess. Well, that doesn't help, and these kinds of things really do, so thank you.
Yeah, right, you can't put a rock on that electrical in there, because they habitually blow a fuse in there. When it, not, the only time they blow them is when they. Uh, women's club has a thing like they did last Saturday. Then you get emergency calls.
One, one thing is, Rick, is it's got the exposed breakers. There's no lock cover or a cover even to go on it, that's the biggest thing, is kids can go in there.
Uh, and what did you say?
Ex- a lock cover, it's an exposed panel. It's a, a sub panel from that you'd put in.
The cover is gone.
No cover, like a door cover, isn't cold now, something like that has to have a cover.
Not as long as you don't, can't stick your fingers directly on a voltage, you. Even still white panels that don't have covers on.
But for municipality like that, would there be?
I think what he said is that because they break, they pop the breakers. It's when you put too many roasters on their drawing.
Exactly, and that's what, what it is, yeah.
Service might need to change.
That's what we're getting at also.
Okay, more fun to go. Resolution zero seven, twenty twenty-three, resolution adopting capital asset policy, has everyone read this?
Yes.
Um, this is, I think, formalizing. Policies that have to do with valuations of, of things that the city owns. And making sure that it's properly tracked and properly, um, managed as an asset.
It's also part of with the capital asset planning, the person that's working with us on that said that this kinda had to be in place.
I think, uh, and, and I read it twice, and the only issue that I have with it is that five thousand dollar figure is too low. The fire department has any number of items that are expendable, that cost over five thousand dollars. I'm guessing that the police department's portable radios are getting right up close to that these days. So I, I think that needs to be raised up. If you capitalize it, typically what happens is people think you should pay for it over a twenty year period rather than. Amortize, rather than paying for it on this year's budget, and uh. Uh, that gets to be really cumbersome when you have a lot of, I mean. Fire department is the first thing that comes to mind, but uh, um. You know, I know P has, has those issues also. Oh, radar goes out, no, no reason to capitalize that, but it's more than ten five thousand dollars, so. So I, so I, I, as I read it, I think the, the good capital plan just needs that, and that. Probably upgrade to ten grand or something like that.
I also noticed when it gets uh scrolled down to the depreciation. There's just a, a note on there, the last sentence. It says, uh, the book value will be written off as depreciation unless it will materially affect the villages' financial statements. Villages should be replaced with cities.
What page is that?
Um, it's his last.
It's the, it's the bottom of that one, resolution, okay.
Go all the way down to the bottom.
Yep, so that's bottom right there. You killed it.
You keep, no, keep going. Okay, down all the way to the bottom. Keep going, depreciation right there. Villages' financial statements should be cities. It's very city.
Let me think about that for a minute. Cause we expect our townships to go for fire equipment up front. And I, you know, the depreciation. I'm not sure how that, how that would uh affect that. If it does, I mean, it, it does, but it would be, the depreciation has to be split. You know, between the paying entities, basically.
We're just replacing the villages.
Yeah, yeah, I see that, I think that's, that's okay, but I, you know, just, you know, the question comes up, thinking about the concept of. Writing it off, yeah.
So do you need it to be written into this specifically, or would that be something need to write into our other agreements?
Probably, probably it could be written into the fire agreements.
Well, it's, isn't it already there by default, when we buy a new truck, they're already taken care of?
And, uh, you know, probably everybody can see their bill. But if you sell it before that time, I'm sure they're gonna wanna be made whole. Or, you, you know what I mean, if it's not all depreciated out and, and gone. Uh, which rarely if ever happens to fire equipment, I'm gonna say, are you sure that it doesn't get past its capital? I don't know. If there's financial implications between them paying their share and the city getting all the depreciation off of it, I. Just a question.
Those are your recommendation to increase it by ten thousand then?
Yes, mine would be to.
I feel like that's reasonable. So should we make a motion to pass it on to full council?
We're at, um, two changes, the capitalization changes to initial value of ten thousand and. So, um, the depreciation right off, so as villages need to be cities.
Can I make the motion to move on to full council with the edits that Eric just?
All right, motion made in second, if all in favor, say aye. So we, this is the billboard discussion, since she's not here, and she said there was a couple of other things she asked if we would. Set this aside till the next meeting. And then it's ordinance, maybe zero two, twenty twenty-three altering in UTV. Get onto that one, so.
Thing that we were changing here was the routes, right? But as I reread this again in preparation for the meeting. I'll go back to my original comment of why, why do we have any restrictions other than forty-six? Cause now that we're taking F, we might as well just let it happen all the way up to forty-six, and you, you not have to turn before they get to forty-six.
For channels that, uh, is, uh. Prohibits parking on one side of the street, no.
Yep, but Broadway is not included in this exclusion.
No, they currently do drive on Broadway. And the parking changed because of.
You're saying that you wanna restrict it on Broadway?
Living on Broadway is, is per, is per mill. You know, when you get, like, now it's not so bad in the summertime, but boy, when you get snow on the side of the road. Uh, there shouldn't be any parking on Broadway, I mean, we, we got that covered, cause we have more winter time parking at night, you know? But uh, you drive down Broadway in a rainstorm and tell me how comfortable it is to go by them, you know? It was pretty narrow.
I think having it on one side of the street is nice, living there, cause there's just not a lot of.
Not a wide street.
It's not a wide street, and there's not a lot of parking options super close, and a lot of people, a lot of people park there. Like, for lengthy periods of time now that it's summer, like the vehicles don't move, which. To me, as a resident, is slightly annoying, but I also understand it, because sometimes we have people that stay overnight that need to park somewhere, so. I think having it on one side is better than having it on both, because when it was both, it was super narrow.
We're not talking about parking here, we're talking.
So, so with that, with them. To, to twenty-six is. When they get to forty-six, they can't turn even left or right, and they can't go straight across, so maybe you should put a sign. Maybe you should put a sign at the corner, at the church corner there to, uh, say, any TVs, whistle away. Or post it, no U T Vs from here on.
Are they entering? Cause Broadway, sometimes they come down like from the school, how, where are coming from?
Or they can come from any place, uh, out in the country, Colorado.
So you want to, but you want to direct people that are in town away.
Yeah, I, I would only say that that last half a block that belongs to the, to the, uh. Motel, I mean, they can't, if they go past there, there's no place for them to go legally. They can't go on a sidewalk, they can't go on the street. Which shouldn't affect people that live in the city, cause they should know about that, but, uh. But if you. Fourteen people riding U T Vs and you come there, I've seen U T Vs down.
So from a procedural perspective, if we have an ordinance that says the last half block of Broadway. Are we gonna issue a citation if somebody is there and, oh, I can't be here, I turn around and, I mean, so I, I think.
That's why maybe a directional sign is a better deal.
But I think still, to, as the ordinance is written here right now, they can drive to forty six. Um, or the proposal that's in front of us, and I've, I've put a sign up that says A T V, turn here on the, the. Street, whatever that is. Now, on the county road F, Dorana Street, so that's on the other side. Do we do the same there? Cause they're restricted to come beyond.
Maybe, maybe a sign from going past. Maybe.
Right. The ordinance all the way to forty six.
Yeah, yeah.
Some space to turn around, it's just letting them know, hey.
Two forty six, they got no place to go.
So then, then I guess I would make.
It's still good ordinance, I think.
Exception would be in three, five dash twelve, what it's, is that we would strike B. Road F, uh, Dorana Street from Keller to west of, uh, Harriman, I would just. To be in page ten of your packet.
Then my only other question is, with any of this, do we need to make any other changes? For like parking or anything like that with opening up any of these new. Routes, cause I know when we designed the routes originally, there were changes to.
I don't think F on the west should be a problem, it's pretty wide there.
And we're okay to continue to have one side of the street have parking.
That I, then we did change that B, uh, three, three fifty eight twelve, there, uh, B. From County Road F, Dorana Street from Keller Avenue West to Harriman. That's not a bad deal, I'll leave that in there. Cause the only place you can go is Dicky from, uh, street, and that's a really roundabout.
I think from an enforcement perspective to clean it up and just stop it at forty six and. Then we're essentially an open city for U T Vs and A T Vs. Um, it's the simplest solution. So I would make the recommendation that we forward the ordinance on to strike.
Okay, so. Are we both known recommendations or you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
I'm making a motion.
This ordinance to, um, city council, striking thirty five twelve. All right, motion made in second, if all in favor, say aye. Thank you. Okay, you've just seen notifications for city residents. Talk about a can of worms.
And maybe it's fairly easy, cause Patty did in her, um, message saying that she's looking into. Options that we have, whether it's code red or, or other things. To make sure that people can sign up and get notifications if there is something that happens, then we can do a mass communication, so.
Two things, first of all, Patty wasn't exactly right when she said the hospital was notified. The warning came out or was put on Facebook at four fifty eight. On Friday afternoon. Thursday afternoon, the hospital didn't get notified until ten on the three sat, third Friday morning. So that, there was a significant amount, I. The whole deal we talked about before, before when we were sitting around here is that, uh. I think we need to have a plan for, uh. Emergency planning, cause we don't have any emergency planning now, what we have is emergency reactions. They don't turn out so well a lot of times.
I do believe Ben has started emergency management plan after he took his classes. So I think a plan has been started.
Saddy doing that, I want some people that have done it for years and years, uh. Which we have people that have done that in, in the, and Patty certainly has to be a part of it, I don't mean that.
I think Taylor said that Ben did it after he was, cause he's, he's, Ben has been trained, he went to training to get emergency, uh. Command training, so he started, it was Ben.
I've been doing that either.
Right, we need somebody to start it.
Spent some time talking to my son, who I just will identify as the emergency planning coordinator for the Valley Hospitals for. Health partners. That's what he does five days a week. Most of the time, um, for a number of years now, and he was, has fire department background. In communications. So I, he, uh, he suggested, and I concur that, uh. A committee with the, with the, the big players on board like the school, you know, Sean or, uh. The, uh, principal. High school principal.
Josh.
Josh, uh, and somebody from Polk County, remember emergency planning. Um, and anything major, and I, and in the grand scheme of things, the water situation, that wasn't a major deal, but.
What it did was, it highlighted shortcomings. It's a, it's a good thing that it happens with something that wasn't turned out to be critical. And if you don't take advantage of that kind of a warning, you're doomed for failure again.
A, a committee be put together, not predominantly dominated by city. Either employees or, you know, but people with, uh, expertise in emergency planning and. Incident command and so on, and I think Steve certainly should be on the committee to, uh. To do that.
I wonder if we can find out, similarly, if there's another municipality in this area that we can duplicate. What they have already established.
Um, you know, I'm not sure, I think Richmond probably has, uh, an, any M P.
It never, it never gets to ask, and it doesn't mean you're gonna follow it exactly.
I'm advertising for my son necessarily, but he's so, emergency planning coordinator for. Uh, Westfield's Hospital also, so. So he's got an important brain to pick if whether using.
That would be a good place to start, is to establish a committee to. Just one of the aspects would be to run down the municipality's program with their plan.
Okay, so I'll work with Patty to pull together a committee then for emergency planning, and it could be then potentially a standing committee that. If there is something that happens, we.
So you can, you can. You can lay groundwork, you can't define every scenario. Chief knows that, you, you practice for the worst and then something else happens, so. Yeah, it needs to be a plan that's got some flexibility to be able to be updated and, and maintained. If you don't maintain these things. They're useless. I don't know if we need to take action, but if you're gonna. I think you can start that.
Yeah, I can create a committee and.
The other thing that I think was important from. From the perspective of the news article was that it did list. The, the ways that notifications happen, and we have a completely passive system. Which means nobody knows, you're not gonna run a silent for water quality, maybe you are. But, um, you know, some of the things to look at. Would be some of those, um, um, non-specific, um, text blast or. Notifications that can go out through other than Facebook and. Nobody knows, I, I didn't know it until my daughter from Menominee asked me about it. And that's, and that's the, that's the phone call that I got more than once. We do, my daughter, my son, Richmond, let me know, my, you know. And that's because of an age, not everybody over sixty five spends much time on Facebook or other social media. And so I think that that is a really big piece of this, not just what do you do, but how do we notify people so that there's. We can't afford to lose trust.
Yeah, well, and I think there needs to be a process of the order that notifications go out too, because the hospital and the school both. Received the information. The businesses in town, I can't tell you how many businesses reached out to me and were like, what the heck is going on? We just had someone come into the store. They got calls from the golf course freaking out because they heard from a member, it just. It was obviously discombobulated, and I think that Facebook is maybe one of the last things that we should be posting. After we've already done all of those formal notifications.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Some form of mass notification that I, uh, I came into my email today, so I forwarded it to Patty as well, some of that. And out to everybody, I was also thinking when we had that sign up and going to was for emergency purposes. Someone could get in there right away and.
Because my life has been computers for way too long. I was on and looked at, there's a lot of different ones out there, and some are opt-ins, some are, you know, depends what you're willing to pay for.
If, if, the Polk County system, which is what, since, uh. Called Situation Red or something like, oh, yeah, that's. But I think that's an opt-in situation, I, you know, and. Well, I don't know, I don't know how many people, this is so. Opt into it, you know?
So I, I think something that needs to be more. Um, well, aggressive than that.
The County Emergency Planning Coordinator and. The three or four folks, you know, from the hospital and, and, uh, school system, uh. Have, I, the school has a pretty good, pretty good. Plan, I mean, they, they, but that's. Kids are pretty well notified families.
We have started collecting information also from, I've sent out an email to the clerks list to see what other municipalities use.
Things when you're talking about doing, um, you know, online billing and, and sending things out, people who opt into that, you'll have that. In your database too, base, you know? Use them all is what I'm saying, is you don't have to figure out how to use them all.
One of the things that would have helped immensely if there would have been an explanation emailed to each of the city council members. So we would have known, or replied to different people that were asking.
There is one comment to me that it said that they were looking, you know, the, the response was they're looking for a different testing facility. It should have had, you know, a little more information than we, we don't like the test, we're going to get more tests done. We believe it was compromised, we don't think that we've done these many, this many tests that went good. It makes no sense that this one failed, so we're looking for another testing. You can over communicate, but not by much.
I was gonna say, that's where some of the, kind of jumbledness came in. We got notified on Thursday afternoon. To put out notification because the D N R couldn't make up their mind. So when we did put it out, it did include more information, then by the time I got home that night, I was told we didn't need it. Which is I'm sure why the school and the hospital weren't notified that night, so I came in Friday morning and canceled it. And about two hours later, we learned that they had a specific form they were supposed to use, and we did run into the place again, so.
And what sounds like the, the. Needs to communicate with the D N R and find out what the heck they plan to do, because consistency of message is huge. Okay. We can move on. Okay, one quarterly process. Illuminate us. This is an opportunity for, for us to have better understanding.
So the D N R regulates how many times we test the water, what we test the water for. Um, we test quarterly, both wells. So you get your, you get your four sample every, every three months, you can pull a sample out of each well that's sent in, that's checked. That's every year. And then monthly, we do it three times for, just we got appointed spots throughout town that we put. You know, we got. That's all with the D N R, and then they regulate. Like, this just happened coincidentally that like Monday, one of our, I sent out thirty eight samples. To a different, to Northern Lakes Labs, that's one that does more in-depth. Testing than a lot of the other local ones. And so they got thirty eight, we had pulled two out of the. Regular wells, plus three randoms just around town and sent them in and everything. I mean, prior to that was all, all fine, and what led to us changing is. The lab we had that we had been with for a lot of years. Like everybody had turnover, we got a bunch of new people in that particular lab. And the wastewater side, we sent wastewater and water together. And I was waiting a month, month and a half to get some of my reports, so I was starting to get heat from the D N R because. I wasn't getting my stuff back, and I started talking to a bunch of other towns when we were at different meetings and stuff and. They told me that they were switching, and my D N R guy actually had told me, hey. You're not the only one, a bunch of people have been trying different things. So instead of jumping on the bandwagon right away and going to that new lab that everybody did, I waited. Four or five months, I'm like, let's see what we get, you know, make sure everybody else is kind of feeling out a little bit. Everything was going good. Yeah, well, then, they, so the new lab, we went to that, um. The first month went good, they hired a new guy. To come and pick up on samples, and it happened to pick up on Wednesdays. And I watched them, he took my water sample and put it in the cooler with ice water. With the wastewater samples, I says, you cannot do that, that's automatic red flag, that's. Answer for contamination, oh, do it all the time, that's what I was told, I'm like, well, yeah. I said, then, like I said, there was other municipalities around too that ended up and talking, I called the D N R lady right away, and she's like. Ain't gonna make you feel any better, but she said it has helped the situation, but other towns were having trouble, well, it was the Wednesday pickup, not. If you sent Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, those always were. Come back fine, well, I started talking to them drivers. What they do is they take them and put them in plastic Ziploc bags. And then lay them on top of the cooler, so that it stays cold for temperature sensitive, and this guy was just launching them in. So, once we got that, we're like, all right, to eliminate this problem, I didn't have problems with the water sampling and testing at the other lab. That wasn't an issue, so we're like, all right, we can eliminate this real quick, water goes one way. And wastewater goes the other way, just try and eliminate, cause there ain't any of us that wanna go through that again. There was not much sleep. I mean, you're sitting there, you're tossing, turning, you're wondering, it's like, why I just. Everything in your head and, yeah. I mean, it's not something to be taken lightly. That's a, that's a big deal.
Well, I, I didn't know that the testing happened that often, you know, that's, that's interesting to find out.
And so they do, um. Every year is a little different, what I gotta send out, um, this later on, they got appointed spots through town that'll be lead and copper. So I'll take bottles out to them spots, the residents will, I'll drop them off in the afternoon, they'll fill it in the morning, I pick it up. And there'll be a box of them, they have different tiers.
You said you, you have another, another place you're sending for more in-depth, one of the things that they. You said you, you have another, another place you're sending for more in-depth, what are the things that they look?
Synthetic organics, uh, chlorinated organics. Um, they're doing P F O S testing now, that just came on our radar this year. Um, I gotta do that the last three quarters. I mean, and they got it spelled out, you gotta wear rubber gloves, you gotta have some other guy there turning the faucet, you gotta, they spelled the whole works out, how you gotta do that. So. And that was part of these first, but it was mainly your inorganic, set it in the water. If you're back to, I mean, it's test.
Well, I think that's, I, I, I ask, cause I think it's important that everyone understands that there's a lot more. That goes into testing than just this last thing we had.
So I, oh, go ahead. So I've had some questions from citizens on the, like, do the results get posted somewhere where they can see them when these tests come back? Is that something that should be?
We get them monthly, and then they do, it's out every year that of the water that was in. We just, we're.
In, I think it's April, published our annual report and the, the C M R report in the paper and has to be in the D N R before the beginning of July. And so available on our website too, it's on our website, we distributed it to locations around town, we keep copies here. Stuff like that.
Perfect.
What are different businesses handout flyers that were, or posted on like North Park and. In the pavilion and stuff, they're usually in the.
Right.
They do that yearly, everything else, soon as that test result, when the lab gets it. It comes to me when they're done and it goes to the D N R. So, it's, we had Joey Beer Can was, when he was here. He did the test on, uh, city well water. When he lived on Soul Street, he took a sample out of his, took a bottle and he was taking some classes. And they took it in and they ran the, it was like a biology stuff, they did their. Class in testing water, they put it against seven bottled waters. There was only one bottled water that was close to what the city of Amory's water tested, they ran the test.
Well.
It beat six out of the seven. I was impressed, Joe told me that, that's pretty good.
For sure. Can you tell us who that one was?
Yeah, so there, there's different, like this one, I got three different times, I'll get three out of this one, it's a bigger year for more of your testing and everything on. What gets done, but they go through it pretty, pretty thorough and that's all on a schedule per the D N R.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, I think that was helpful.
That's, that's.
Something I know now that I didn't know before.
Yes.
There'll be a bunch of people that know more about it.
Yeah. You're done.
I make a motion to adjourn.
It looks like it would that.
All in favor?
The roost. We are done. Thank you.